Call the meeting to order. And we'll start out, I think we want to start out looking at the, well, we'll do the minutes and the warrants. Then let's look at the agenda and make sure we want to leave it as it is because some folks have been asking, put some stuff on. And also to make sure we have you guys, the visitors typically we try to take at the beginning. But we'll do minutes and warrants.
We'll move to minutes and warrants.
Send minutes.
Any discussion on the minutes and the warrants? All in favor?
Coming.
All right. And then let's look over the agenda, folks, and see what needs to change, if anything. Robin, is your motion that you had passed around, um, school safety, an S? It's on? All right. And David, want to make sure we looked at some stuff for the alternative governance? And that'll come up during alternative governance.
We can, we can put that away. But I do have a brief.
When we get to it, then we'll, we'll go to it. We do have need for an executive session today as well. And I think Kim needs to leave by 6:30.
Well, I can leave at seven.
Okay. Like to get you to your son's event.
So we have to give him to executive session before seven.
And you need to go to the next door at seven?
I can stay here. I'd love to, but I can't.
Okay. Okay. So then I would suggest that we move right into the section on our visitors. And we'll go ahead and recognize you guys at the beginning and go from there. Is that okay?
That's great.
Okay. So then let's go ahead with that. And maybe you guys can stand up, introduce yourselves. And if that's the way you want to launch into the presentation that you have for us and the discussion points, that's fine, too.
Okay. I'm going to move my chair up here because that's what we talked about might be comfortable in terms of the filling. I'm Judith Paul Mary, School Counselor from Academy School.
Are you going to do a bunch of PowerPoint that we need to move?
No, no. Okay. Okay. So I guess we'll start off. So I'm going to talk a little bit about my role here at school, which many of you know that, but just allow some of the challenges going on. And I am going to try to keep this brief and allow Catherine and Tracy to go into more detail about some of the things that are impacting our students in terms of trauma and substance abuse and other issues in the community. So there's three main areas that my work with students is divided into, and that would be my classroom work, my group work, and my individual work. With the social curriculum and the classroom work that I'm doing, that's primarily with a second step program, which is an anti-bullying and anti-violence curriculum. A lot of that is about teaching empathy, which can be taught. It's not something that we're born having or knowing how to use that. But being able to identify emotions in yourself and others and to take another person's perspective is a really critical skill for students. A lot of the units within the curriculum deal with impulse control and problem solving, which again is an issue that more and more, as kids are facing more anxiety-producing events in their life, we see a problem with impulse control. And then the last one, which is equally important and strong, is managing strong emotions. And that comes into play particularly around managing anger. So another thing that I'm doing more and more of is small group work. And this is again driven by need. So an example would be that there's one classroom, it's a younger grade classroom, where I've been teaching in there once a week for almost half a year. And then I realized because of the needs in this classroom, they needed more. So after having a meeting with the teacher, what I decided was I was going to do a series of groups where every single child in that classroom was going to be in a group. Where we could focus more intently on social skills, impulse control, friendship building, and the kind of things that these kids just don't have and really need. So we're doing that. In addition, I also need to follow the kindergarten students in small groups because one of my main goals as a school counselor here is that every student in the school has a champion, that every student in the school has someone that they can trust and that they know that there's a door that's open and there's an adult that's willing to sit down and problem solve and listen and help them with the things they're dealing with. So sometimes there are groups designed around one particular student, a student that has a very strong need to build friendships or manage a certain emotion. So we'll pick that student and then find some other students who will blend in well and all work with them in a group setting. I do a lot of work also individually with kids that need some extra attention and need a check-in and trying to be as respectful as I can of confidentiality, realizing that we're being filmed. I'll give you an example. We had a family that moved here. It's a family that has multiple children. This family has experienced homelessness. They've experienced drug abuse. They've experienced a parent being in jail. So this same family has also been in three schools in five years. And at a meeting that we had last year, I think it was, Andy had brought that up, at the school board, that this is another trauma and another stressor at least that kids are dealing with, a more transient population. So this family comes to us and these are already the issues that these kids have dealt with, as well as witnessing domestic violence. So with those particular kids, I meet with them individually, the kind of behaviors we see with these kids. One student in particular, the teacher might call me, ask if I can come, and I come into the classroom. This kid's sitting on the ground crying, completely shut down, can't function. One of the students, we see a different kind of acting out where maybe it's more violence and aggression towards peers. With another one, it might be defiance, like maybe just getting up and walking out of the room without telling anyone where you're going. So these are the kind of issues that kids are dealing with. Again, I try to help them and help build some resiliency. Another thing I'm seeing more of, a trend more, is again related to substance abuse, more situations where we have grandparents that are stepping up and sometimes completely having to fill in that parental role and take custody, oftentimes because of substance abuse. One child I'm thinking with in particular, his time with me is very sacred. And it's something, if we have a snow day or we have some other event and he misses his appointment the next day, he is at my door with his little smile, "When am I going to see you? When am I going to see you?" So there's a real need. I think overall, I'm seeing, again, in relationship to what's happening in the community, more anxiety. And you see that in their little faces when they're at the door or when you walk in the classroom and they jump up and say, "Please can I come see you today?" Or in the hallway, "I need to see you now." So all of the themes that I'm working on, both with my leadership group and in the classrooms and individually, are being inclusive, kids not feeling isolated, and kids feeling that they all have a trusted adult to go to. I've also had some students come to me, as well as teachers, and talk about the school violence that we've had in our country and how that makes them feel and feelings of unsafety. And certainly, there's some things we can do, there's a lot we can't control. But one thing we can control is make sure that as much as possible, each of those students and each of the adults try to reach out so there aren't students that feel really isolated and that no one cares, that no one's going to include them. I guess I don't have to say anything more about teacher support, except that my door's open, I have people call me, they know they can reach me. People are feeling the stress. The adults are feeling the stress as well. Parent support, a lot of that has to do with linking kids up to resources, in particular therapy. There's a lot of kids because of what they're experiencing, they need therapy. So a lot of that is me talking with the folks, explaining the value of the therapy, why it can be a critical piece, and then helping facilitate that for them and working in cooperation then with the therapist to make sure that whatever issues they're working on there, I can complement that and that we can have a coordinated approach to helping that child. So what I want to talk about just very briefly is the leadership group that I'm doing. And I just want to say with that, I feel very passionate about it, as I do with all of my work, but I love doing the leadership work. And I feel like it's such a gift that I get a chance to work with these kids and develop their leadership skills and to plant some seeds of peace in them and then send them forward to hopefully join the Brattleboro Middle School team. And this year, I've been so excited that I have Scott Coltonbaugh, and I'm going to invite him to come up and speak, join me. And I will say, another thing that we've been seeing as a phenomenon is we're seeing many, many students that don't have a father, that don't have a father present in their life, either because of jail, substance abuse, moved away. And so anytime we can get a male in the building, I'm thrilled. And Scott is a great male role model. He's funny, he's warm, he's very compassionate. And at first, some of the kids, when they met him, they were a little bit like, "Whoa, who is this exuberant fellow here?" And it took a little while, but now they're really thrilled to have him join me each week. So I want to just let Scott speak, and then we'll turn it over to the other counselors and then later on certainly field any questions you may have. Scott?
Thank you, Judith. So yeah, my name is Scott Coltonbaugh, and my actual title is the Youth Programs Coordinator for the Brattleboro Area Prevention Coalition. And the, and BFC has had a relationship with WSCSU and many of the schools for a few years now. Ron was very supportive, Lyle has been very supportive. And part of my role with that is I work with different groups at the different schools. So at Putney Central, at BAMS, and here at Academy, I work with the middle school leadership teams. And we do different school climate building activities and things like that. So, you know, the stuff that Judith was talking about here. At BAMS, for example, we, we do some more school outreach stuff. We've taken our Samantha Skunk Drug Safety Skit to kindergartens around WSCSU. We've hit almost all the kindergartens now. I think we just have Academy and Oak Grove left to do. Don't worry, we're not forgetting about you. And, and that's been wonderful and successful. And so the middle school students there are dressing up as animals and they have a drug safety skit, and the kindergarteners love it and they, they learn that. And here at Academy, one of the things that we've really been working on is, Academy has a buddy bench to encourage students to step in and help those who are feeling a little lonely, feeling like they don't have a group to fit into at recess. Now, the Buddy Bench has been around for a couple of years. The middle school leadership team purchased it and was able to put it out there. But we came to the realization that it's been a little while since we talked about how to use the Buddy Bench and what the expectations are. And so the team has been preparing, you know, a skit for their assembly time, for their all schools thing. And then they're also going to visit some classrooms to, you know, more individually talk about like, okay, this is what we're doing, this is how the Buddy Bench works. You sit on it when you want a buddy, when you want a friend, when you're feeling like you want to join a game, but you don't know how. And so if you see someone sitting on the Buddy Bench, you come and invite them in. And just being able to reinforce that and keep that going as a school norm and as a, as a climate norm for, you know, showing how we accept people and we embrace people and bring them in. The other part of what I do, I also work with the Above the Influence Group at the high school. And so we work with them and they come and do presentations at some of the schools sometimes. We've done some at Putney and at Demerson. And then independently of all that, I also do work with young men around happy masculinity and do that as an, as an independent thing. One of the things that I've done here at Academy is I've started coming and having lunch with one of the sixth grade class boys once a week. And we just talk and have lunch. And, you know, the idea is we start to get them thinking about their influences of masculinity and, and gender and just being a good person in general. And it's not about, you have to do it my way. It's about make conscious decisions about, you know, the influences that you have in your life. And so, you know, we've, we've had three lunches so far. So we've just been doing trust building and stuff up until now. So the conversation this week was about their, you know, favorite characters and superheroes and stuff like that. So it's been good. Yeah. So it's been wonderful to work with Judith this year. Been working with Putney since last year and then BAMS since last year as well.
I want to just also add that one of the things that Scott's been helping us with is we've been doing a lot of talk about relationships and what is a healthy relationship? What is not a healthy relationship? Sometimes how do you, with Grace, extricate yourself from an unhealthy friendship or relationship? And we had a young woman that came in and met with the group and talked with them. She's from the Women's Freedom Center and did a really wonderful talk about relationships, boundaries, standing up for yourself, this kind of thing. And then I actually had her come and speak to some sixth grade classrooms, and now they want her to come back again. So Scott has been talking with students about individual classrooms that the leadership team wants to go into to do some talks around being a good friend, you know, being a, being an upstander, and how do we, you know, really advocate for ourselves, but also, you know, for others. And I think that's an issue that, that we work on every week because we also have students that are very, very different in that room. And sometimes we get some pretty heated debates. So our goal there is it's okay to have a difference and even sometimes to get a little excited, maybe raise your voice. But at the end of our time, when people walk out of there, we've resolved whatever the issue is and shared our different opinions. So some of the kids definitely are interested in that. We're going to be doing more of them coming into the classroom, working in the room. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for having me, inviting the counseling and the social worker. My name is Jody Vitellpi. I work at Academy School. I'm a social worker there. And my understanding is the other two counselors, Tracy and Catherine, will talk more in depth about trauma and ACEs. Am I understanding that's correct? So my presentation, it's important to realize that their presentation is a very huge factor in what I will be presenting as well. That being said, I just want to list the team I work with within the school, teachers, administration, counselors, office staff, English speakers of other languages, SPL, special ed, arts, PE, nurse, cafe services, paraprofessionals, custodians, AST, planning room staff, communication facilitators. Why I take the time to say that team is because, leads into my next paragraph, actually, because the needs of our families in our community are complex and multifaceted. Families and what they need must be recognized and addressed at the school level to promote good attendance and create the best setting for social, academic, and emotional growth. Just like our community, our schools cannot ignore or avoid these needs that our families present with. If ignored, the needs and issues will erode away our students' ability to create their own resiliencies. And research does indicate resiliency can be built upon. It can be built up through positive attitude, community, good communications. Self-efficacy is a very big promoter of resiliency. My job, my role is to work largely to connect families to needed community-based services. And in that way, I can help decrease the stressors, which will ultimately be helpful in reducing some of the trauma that the counselors will present. Outside of the school, I work with a lot of agencies, as well as the other elementary schools, but agencies such as Groundworks, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Kids &amp; Coats, Freedom Center, Winston Proudie, Economic Services. And support can be also, I can direct families to support through mental health agencies. I've been working very diligently on relationships within the families because I think that's really important to be able to have that relationship. So when they do need a resource, they can ultimately come to me. Or if a teacher or administration or somebody within the school comes to me, I can direct their family to a support system in the community. So if I was breaking it down into topics, homelessness, I'm working with the new liaison in the community to help find temporary housing sometimes, more often than permanent. So she and I are creating a good relationship and we've done several, several, let's say, problem solving and working with paperwork and getting families to be able to have housing. And again, often just temporary, but it can lead to a referral to Groundworks and then they can work with case management and they can get more permanent housing for the families. Yeah. I continue to work with United Way. Largely, I work with United Way for Kids &amp; Coats. And I also participate in other community activities with Kids &amp; Coats. I continue to work with DCF. I attend family safety planning meetings and work with Academy staff to keep them informed of things that would be pertinent to the student's education, changes in their lives, locations, guardians. I also work with DCF and when there's a open case or there's just, just a little bit extra support is needed for the families, I can help out with that because they will communicate to me and then I can help address that with the families. Of course, working with the nurse here in the school is imperative. Health concerns with the students, clothing transportation is an area that the nurse also helps with. I always try to be accessible to the teachers, any obstacles that I may be able to help with, IUP requirements, transportation to meetings. And transportation has been more than just a ride. It gives you the opportunity to talk with the parents or the guardians, gives us the opportunity to listen to one another, understand the obstacles and the barriers better. And also, in my travels, they teach me things that I don't always know, like currently I have a call out because I'm not really sure what the Obama phone system is now that it's a new president. And I did a little research, but it can go either way. I'm not clear if low-income still gets subsidized for phone usage, which is really important for families. Communication as a whole with families is really an obstacle. And I feel like I really help all the teachers because it's very time-consuming. It's small, but it's really time-consuming to be able to connect like that. Assist the families when they ask for community provider help, might be therapists, psychiatrists, be doing the paperwork for clubs because paperwork's not always that easy. Referrals to a spider and again, help them navigate the systems. Two relationships that I had with parents last year really fostered into a really great thing, I think. These two mothers that mentioned they like running, I followed up with them and as they mentioned, they'd be willing to be coaches at the Girls on the Run. And so right now, we have a sixth grade teacher, two parents, and myself. So we have 20 kids on board for Girls on the Run, which is the max right now. And Girls on the Run also reinforces the positive, the positive and the like protective factors that we can do in the school. It helps self-esteem, confidence, all the things that we'll be working on as well with the students to help them handle their situations at home. Working with Title I teachers still and working to get parent groups to meet for current topics, that's a goal we're working on. I attend EST. Let's go water, excuse me. Thank you. Okay, so back to ESTs. I can help with the plans out in the community and also within the school. It may require some extra help with maybe a planning room plan or a step group room, guidance counseling. We're more, we're similar with that. That all comes out of the extra educational support teams. If, also if Judith is out, speaking of our working together, if she happens to be out and maybe running a group or with individual students and there's a crisis call comes in, I can manage that. And the staff in the office are excellent at referring family calls to me as well, which is really vital. So those are the things I've been working on since the last time I presented in front of the board. I also have some things that I see that I want to do as projects. And Kelly and I are working on trying to get the Veggie Vango program to move closer to the school and be more parent-friendly hours, which would be, hopefully before school. Currently, it's at BUHS, if you're familiar with it, and it goes 10 to 11. So I can help the parents pick up the vegetables and distribute it to them, but again, to be able to have it here on this location would be really handy for them. My understanding is there's a socia, I'm not sure if there's a social worker, but there's a substance abuse professional working with lung agency now, and I'd like to connect with that person as the crisis is very clear, addiction in our community. She works with the families in Wyndham County. I want to keep, let's see, what should I say? Keep posted for a fundraiser for Kids &amp; Coats that I'm, got surprise coming up, I'm hoping. Be ready for that. It might improve stairs. Another thing I'd like to do, which has been in my mind for a while, is to get out to subsidize housing communities and present topics of interest there. It might be if a acute fear comes up, if some sort of dangerous thing is found and they don't know how to speak to their child about it, or maybe drug education, help them learn, not learn, but help them be able to address the issue on a safe level for the child's developmental stage. Yeah, I really would like to do that. If it was other social workers in the communities, I could team up with them. I think it'd be better as a team approach. So that's pretty much my goals. There's other smaller ones, like within the school, I want to get back to going to the paraprofessional meetings because they're very key also to helping communicate with me what they see a student might need. And then I can do the outreach out into the community. And I started a Facebook page, but it hasn't really got off the ground, so I might want to try to revisit that, where maybe weekly, just healthy tips or somehow reach out to the community a bigger number. I guess my goal would be to try to get more. And I'll use the word guardians because like Judith suggested that it's not just parents, it's grandparents, it's aunts, it's uncles, it's, it's all sorts of different configurations of families now. So, yeah. And I am starting to, I'm going to be meeting with somebody at Economic Services tomorrow because I think that would be important to get a relationship with them, a more solid one going with them.
I want to just add that, and I'm remiss in not having said this earlier, I really appreciate it having Jody here. And there's just too much need for one human being. And with all the things I have to deal with during the day, I can't get out in the community and be doing these home visits, the partnerships that she's developed with like Economic Services, DCF, all these other players. And the families have so much need that to be able to have a person who can sit down, explain something, you know, help them like with housing or filling forms out, has been really critical. And she's done an excellent job with forming, you know, friendships and relationships with a lot of the really important players in the community. So it's been a boon. I mean, it's been really helpful for this school and I really appreciated it.
Thank you, Judith. Thanks. And that brings to mind also the getting together with families in the school with activities like literacy breakfasts or stone soup activities, like our barbecue in this, in the beginning of the year and then at the end of the year. Those are ways to create experiences with parents and more relationship building happens after experiences. And I really appreciate those opportunities to develop the relationships there. Thank you.
Chair. I'm going to actually screen. So I don't know how you want to do, I'm going to refer to a PowerPoint and I need to kind of stay here because I have some.
We need to move so we can see.
Yeah, we can see.
Okay. Okay. Hi, I'm Catherine Mason. I'm the full-time school counselor at Oak Grove. And I've been there and had the honor of working in this great community for about seven years now. And helping me in the endeavors of school counseling, which I listen to my colleagues and I'm like, wow, we do a lot, is Tracy Bartlett. She's our HCRS clinician. And Tracy- And Tracy is there three days a week. Tracy's work is primarily targeting working with anywhere from seven to nine students, providing them individual psychotherapy. And that can look a myriad of different ways. It can be meeting in her office, it can be providing support in the classroom for those students. It can be doing small groups or lunch bunches with those kids as well as reaching out to those students' families. So her three days are pretty busy, but when she's available, she actually will also co-facilitate lunch bunches. Right now we're doing mixed-age wonderful Wednesday lunches. So we have K through three kids getting together for a lunch. And then we have grades four through six kids getting together and we do that together. We're also working with our sixth graders to do some transition planning and managing their feelings of safety, given the distress that they're experiencing in our, in our culture. So she's working on that with me as an example. So the school counseling program that I have outlined here, really, I'm going to go through it briefly. If you have questions, we can talk about it at the end. I think key is to everything is that the work is done in a trauma-informed approach, which means really a layered approach that, to all that we do, that creates heightened sensitivity to the needs of children and parents and providing supports to the staff so that they have a heightened sensitivity to the implications of trauma in kids' lives. And the themes of inclusivity, emotional awareness, and sensitivity are key to any kind of trauma-informed work. As I just look at this list of counseling, I will say that the crisis support and intervention can override everything else I'm about to say. So that if on a given day, there's some child that's having a difficult time or a family, any of these other organized events may just have to go on hold because the crisis support and intervention gets priority. And I will say that the staff, as well as the students at Oak Grove, are tremendously understanding that, oh, I'm supposed to meet with Katherine. Well, she has something come up. They understand that and they know that and they work with that. Addressing social-emotional needs is key. As you've already heard, unique in Oak Grove is that we have a particular curriculum that as a team of us developed about five years ago and we keep revamping, that is rooted in the guiding principles of Oak Grove. Safety, kindness, respect, and responsibility. And those lessons happen in every classroom, K through six, every Monday. So all the students are getting a dose of these guiding principles and social expectations. The other social-emotional work I may do really supplements that. And it's really, often it's more intensely for the K through third, K through fourth, where I might be working the stones of regulation in a classroom or in small groups, helping kids to identify their feeling states, where are they at? How do we get back to green state, which is being ready to go and ready for learning? We've been fortunate to learn about the therapy dog visits that Tracy has happening at Green Street. And we've started doing that this year with all our classes and that's been wonderful. I also provide executive skills coaching for primarily our sixth graders because they're, they're more developmentally ready to really look at and understand better the notion of executive skills. What are their strengths? What are their challenges? And how can I best support them in addressing that, particularly as they move forward into the middle school? Mindfulness is something that Jerry and I have really been working on. Both as a resource, a really tremendous resource for our school staff and their self-care, as well as a resource for students and learning how to self-regulate. It's one thing to learn, you know, where, what color zone am I in? I'm red, I'm really mad. Then we have to do the second phase of what do you do to get back to green? How do you get ready to learn? What are the strategies? And kids have a huge range of strategies that are going to work for them. No one's, no one's set of strategies and skills is going to work for every child. So in mindfulness classes in each classroom, we might, I might teach a variety of different strategies. And the goal is they will choose the top three that work for them. So each child ideally has a toolbox of strategies. Some of the classroom teachers literally write their, they make a little toolbox icon and they write it and it's on their desk. So when they come in and they put a sticker on the, on the refrigerator that says, I'm in the blue zone, she can say, go find one of your strategies so you can get back to green. So if, we've done this, it's available for all our teachers to use. They take, they have break spaces for students and all the classrooms. Here's show and tell. I'll just come up here so you can see show and tell. They may have a bin like this in a classroom and they can use this with their class just to work on breathing. And they'll do it with the whole class. And then kids have access to this if it's useful to them. There may be a calming glitter jar. We make these in small groups. And it's just a way for kids, if they're at a, at the take a break spot, that they can just focus on this and work with their breath as this slows down and quiets down. There's often a timer that they can time themselves, see how much time they need, squeezing fidgets. Different teachers will put different things up in the take a break space. What zone are you in? My mind looks like this. Lazy eight breathing. And then calming choice cards. And kids can make their own calming choice cards. So we've done a couple of in-services where teachers have experimented with different activities, mindfulness activities, and selected what ones they feel most comfortable utilizing with their classroom. Health and wellness is something all of us do. I'm speaking about it at Oak Grove, but Act One requires that we address child sexual violence prevention in the school. Many of us use We Care, Care for Kids. I'll teach some of those classes on my own or, or we'll co-teach with the classroom teacher. I'll do puberty education, co-teaching that with classroom teachers. And as I already shared, the sixth grade transition group and future planning I do along with some support from Tracy as well. Student leadership team, you know, Judith spoke to it. It is definitely an exciting, an invigorating thing to pull off. One thing that we did this year is our kids are very strongly connected to Groundworks Collaborative. And this year in conjunction with King Arthur, we did a bake for good. And King Arthur sends us all the flour and all the recipes. And instead of doing a fundraiser, we made rolls and brought them all down to the food shelf. So that's a regular relationship that the kids have. And we're going to be back, I think it's sometime in the future, with our leadership team to tell you more. As, you know, Judith and both Jody spoke, working with community resources is critical. I would say the two key ones that, that, they're, yeah, they're all pretty key. Big Brothers, Big Sisters is really vital to, they provide mentors for our students. We have a few police officers that come to our school who have two students that they work with, which has had a tremendous positive impact on the school. The kids love these officers, they love the kids. And we have to actually sort of cordon off a space so the police officer can sit with their, with their little and have some of their own time because everybody wants to be with them. I would say the other significant agency this year has been DCF. We have currently about 10 students who are either in DCF custody or in their sort of provisional care. And that requires a tremendous amount of organization, both on my part and Jerry's in terms of what do these students need, where are they spending the night? What transition is happening? What court hearing is going on? And it is a pretty constant communication that we, we are the ones who have to drive it. If we weren't, if we weren't making the calls and we weren't doing the emails, we wouldn't know. And the kids wouldn't know. The kids would be, DCF is over the top. And so we have to be really instrumental in keeping informed with what's happening for these students. In addition to this, there's a lot of administrative tasks that may happen, but I don't know. So the needs at Oak Grove. I would say in the last seven years, I've just seen an increase, a pretty profound increase in terms of the needs of our kids. And I'm just going to give you some information about that. Thinking about trauma in our community, I did an informal review of students' histories that I was aware of. And this statistic is, is, is an informal one based on my knowledge. And what I want to say about that is that this is not based on lightweight anything. This is based on knowing children that have experienced and documented profound child abuse, neglect, traumatic deaths in their family, witness to violent crime. So it has a profound experience, profound impact on them. And trauma of this nature changes a child's brain and changes their brain in such a way that it makes it very difficult for them to learn. And this is what we're all working with. And it's not unique to Oak Grove. I mean, it's happening in all of schools. So to think that 35% in a classroom, brains are already altered for these young children, is a pretty devastating impact for a school community. In addition, based on ACE's adverse childhood experiences, and Tracy will talk more about that, it can be estimated that 50% of our parents have had significant adverse childhood experiences. So the combination of these two yields really, I will say, we have remarkably joyful, resilient kids. Absolutely. But we also have children who are in tremendous need of specialized and individualized supports. At Oak Grove alone, 22% of our students have IEPs. As of a meeting today, we have an additional 10 IEPs that are pending. 13% of Oak Grove students have 504s. As of today, five additional students are pending 504s. And these are 504s for kids who have PTSD, generalized anxiety disorder, who have pervasive child development traumatic disorder and ADHD. 22% of our students need EST support, which means the classroom teachers are discovering that their tier-one instruction is not enough. And we have done a remarkable job at Oak Grove, really teasing out what kinds of interventions students need. It's, watching EST over the past five years has been really exciting to see the incredible fine-tuned interventions academically that we're able to provide our kids. And the effectiveness of it is quite remarkable. But there's still this many children. And 11% of our students need step behavioral supports, which is significant behavior support. You've heard of, you heard from Greg and Shelley at your last meeting. So I want to kind of bring your attention to the first three because that, they are each unique and separate groups. There's not an overlap. The 11% of the kids receiving step behavioral supports are intermixed with, they could have a 504, they could have an IUP, they may have an EST. But what we're looking at is 57, probably more, percent of our students who need specialized instruction, specialized accommodations, or specialized interventions in the classroom. And I guess, you know, what does this look like in the classroom? It really, I mean, this translates to one out of every two kids is in this category at our little school of 130 kids K through six, 140 kids pre-K through six. And that means for any classroom teacher, whether they're sitting with a group of 16 or a group of 20, they can have 10 kids in that classroom who are in exceptional need, over and above a general tier-one instruction. And I will say that it seems like we figured out the tier-one, tier-two, tier-three instruction and interventions for the academic needs. Where we are really struggling at Oak Grove is how do we best meet the mental health needs and the emotional behavioral needs of these kids? So as much human resources that we have, that we have in place, and we're doing really good work, but it's not enough. I'd like to say it is, but it's not. And we have tremendous staff support. And Jerry does a tremendous job supporting us in meeting these, meeting some of these kids. But in the seven years that I've been there, it's remarkable, the increase. Family engagement is key in helping this, healing this process. It's not the only answer, but it is definitely one of the pieces of the puzzle, as Jody already spoke about. The more we can engage our families and support them in managing their lives, then we see kids having better social skills, improved behavior, higher test scores. So this is our motto this year. Jerry does a great job giving us a motto every year. And I would say this is really fitting because it is the sort of side-by-side nature of collaborative work of teachers with our HCRS clinician, with community resources that are keeping these kids still joyful, still coming to school. Part of the Oak Grove community.
Boop, you want to take a question now for Katherine specific?
Spook, you want to take a question now for Catherine specific?
I need to make an observation. I feel like what I have just heard is a diagnosis of an entire society in crisis. That almost everything, as I looked at that, almost every, every single one of the school counseling problems and all of these other things are each and every one a manifestation of a society that's going off the rails. And that, what the schools have become are just like clinics, like health clinics, trying to save people as more and more fall deeper and deeper, I say people, it's mostly kids, but to some extent the parents, because we have to deal with them too to some extent. But we are becoming a place where we just have to, we're in crisis intervention as a whole educational system. It almost seems to me like right now, we have teachers that have to have a lot of social, a lot of social work skills, and it may not be long before we'll be hiring social workers that have some teaching skills. Because it won't be fifty percent, it might be seventy-five or eighty percent of the kids that are affected by some kind of major problem. And I won't go, I can go further and actually try to show where this is coming from, but rather than that, because I think it'll be too abstract at this point, that subject, this subject must become a topic of discussion in the schools and in the community to begin getting a grip on reality and rethinking what we're doing and how we're doing it and where we are, and to move, so we can go, so hopefully we can figure out something that will begin changing things for the better, instead of putting Band-Aids on things getting
And I know, I do want to say, if you came to Oak Grove, you wouldn't just see all this heaviness. You would really also see remarkable kids having great days, a lot of laughter in the classroom, a lot of loving support, and a lot of great learning happen. So, it is quite amazing that all that can happen in light of the information that I just.
We'd all commit suicide if there weren't some hope, some good people left.
I feel like what I'm hearing is not a Band-Aid approach at all, but that these, I mean, one of the basic problems here is the opiate epidemic and poverty. And while those aren't problems that can be solved just by the schools alone, the, all of the interventions that are taking place are meant to give these kids the skills and sort of support network to break that cycle. So, I mean, I feel like this is much more than a Band-Aid. This is one part of the solution to the problem, is exactly what we're hearing described here.
Right.
And it's the part that we have control over as a school system, the only part.
I think an excellent example of that, which I didn't know you were doing, was that section on mindfulness. I mean, really, those are the kinds of things that really change people.
And just as an anecdote to that, I actually had a teacher today come up to me, who was a little, you know, doing mindfulness activities, just general mainstream, is not necessarily my most favorite thing. It's not like every teacher has signed up for a quiet moment and working with quiet breath, right? But we do it. And I had a teacher come up to me today and say, "I just want to let you know, I have four mindfulness things that I'm doing with my class, and they are working really well." And that person was a little bit of a curmudgeon, you know, the first time I ever did any mindfulness thing, they sat there and they just kind of opened their eyes and kind of glared and like, quiet breath and kind of, so it is good to get that feedback, that it's helpful for kids and for the teaching.
Well, I just would say, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, because when we're talking about here, it's not the true cause, we're talking about symptoms. All the things that we're addressing are symptoms that our children come to us with every day. And it's not just here in Brown Road, it's across the country.
That's what I'm saying, and maybe a little later on, I might kind of be a place to say what it's a symptom of.
So, last but not least, I am Tracy Benet Perrin. I am the school counselor at Green Street School. I've been here for five years. I'm not tech savvy at all, so I have no idea why the PowerPoint's doing what it's doing. And if someone asks to help me, I'd be super grateful.
It says it's reconnected, so I think it's not.
Yeah, where's my presenter?
You know, are you guys okay if it looks like this? It's fancy, because I feel like we're taking a lot of your time. So, Green Street School, our counseling program is exciting and constantly evolving. And I think that's the nature of counseling programs, is that when we look at what the needs of our schools are, we have to think about how are we best going to adapt to meet the needs of our families and our students. At Green Street School, I am completely committed, as well as Mark and the staff that I'm lucky enough to work with, to form meaningful relationships with children and families in our community. You know, it's a Green Street School community. I had the opportunity to work with Mark on Monday, and we went into a lot of classrooms and had some pretty tough conversations with kids. And every time, we said, "We are the Green Street School community, and we care about you, and we care about your learning." And that's truly, I think, what I feel is the biggest strength of our school and of our counseling program, is that we want every kid to come to school, to feel safe, to be able to access their education, to be able to grow socially. And so, that's kind of the goal as we move forward. I'm fortunate enough to work with Erica Salami. She is our full-time HCRS clinician. She's been with us for four years?
Four.
Three years. And she's amazing, and she works with approximately thirty students. And she does individual therapy with many of the kids that are referred to her for counseling. Parents are on board for this counseling, they work with her, they do intake, and they get access to a variety of HCRS services through their work with Erica. So, we are truly lucky to have her as part of our team. She and I, she and I meet weekly to coordinate what's going on for kids. A lot of times we'll talk about kids on her caseload, sometimes we'll talk about kids in the school, and then she and I'll be able to work to figure out what services are needed and how to best support kids. So, curriculum, curriculum's always something I think school boards want to care about, because that's kind of the measurable thing that we do. And again, our curriculum is constantly evolving, depending on the needs of the kids. One thing that's a mandatory thing that occurs in classrooms is the We Care, We Care for Kids. It's the Act One curriculum that really helps kids identify how to talk about themselves, talk about their safety, talk about healthy relationships, and also a signal for kids to talk to adults about help, if they need help. And so, that's a critical curriculum. We started doing social thinking about three years ago, and what that is, is teaching kids how to think socially. We think about social skills, and we think about, oh, this kid needs to learn how to get along with friends. But if kids don't know how to think socially, we're asking them to do things that they don't, that they don't have the skills to do that. So, what we're able to do with the social thinking is we're able to really give the kids the skills necessary to learn social skills. So, one of my favorite parts of social thinking is rock brain. And what rock brain does is rock brain gets really stuck, and rock brain doesn't move, because rock brain is a rock. And so, we got to teach kids how to not be rock brain, but maybe how to be a little bit more flexible in their thinking. And so, that, it's that thought that sometimes you feel like you have a rock brain, but we got to figure out how we can move from rock brain into more flexible thinking. And there is a superhero that comes into it, which is really fun, and it makes it very real and exciting for kids, which is why we do it. The Mind Up Curriculum, we started this year. This is our mindfulness. We have the curriculum K through six, and it's an opportunity for teachers, myself, I co-teach with teachers, we talk about how do we be mindful in the classroom? How do we access calming breaths? How do we access calm in our body and in our brain when we are feeling escalated or stressed, or maybe not even ramped up enough? We're really tired, because we didn't get what we needed, and so, we're feeling really low and really blue. So, Mind Up Curriculum helps us work with kids and learning mindfulness. Common Sense Media is something that we started doing a couple of years ago, that's, I usually do this with the sixth grade and fifth grade, and it's how do we be healthy when we're online? How do we go on to our virtual lives, such as social media, you know, we have virtual field trip things? How do we do that safely? How do we make good choices? Because I think, you know, I'm kind of old, and so, I didn't have all this stuff growing up. So, I think it's really important for us to teach kids, how do we do this safely? This isn't something you can't do, it's something you can do, but we really want to teach you how to use these resources, because they are resources, safely, in a way that keeps them safe, and it helps them learn how to be kind and how to be respectful online. We do a lot with teaching tolerance, that's organization, and teaching diversity, how do we appreciate differences throughout the school? And that's been a valuable conversation that we have within the classroom. I also do, with our sixth graders, I do do the transition planning. I'd forgotten about it, because I haven't done it yet. But what happens is Natalie Brennan from VSAC comes in, and she talks to the kids about what are the next steps? So, why do I go to middle school? Why do I go to high school? You know, some of our kids turned to me and said, you know, after kindergarten, I'm like, what, there's more? You know, so why do we do school? Why do we keep going? And Natalie Brennan does an amazing job. She's such a gifted educator. So, she comes in and talks to our sixth graders, and then we take a walking field trip down to CCB. And people at CCB open up their college, and they get to go inside, and they get to go into, like, the wicked cool nursing stuff, you know, with the bodies, and then they get to go into an art room. And so, the kids get excited about what the next steps are. Yeah, there's going to be more homework, but yeah, I might be able to do something that I've been dreaming about doing since I was, you know, seven or eight years old. And then we do the zones of regulation, much like Catherine talked about. Kathy Bloom, who's our planning room person, she and I went to the workshop on zones of regulation, and we try to work collaboratively. And how do we help kids figure out where they are in emotional regulation? Are they super, super excited? Are they super, super low? And where do we get them? How do we get them to the green zone, which is the zone that's optimal for learning? And a lot of kids will just stay in yellow, but I even think that's okay, because if you're in yellow, you're not in red, so you're able to maintain. And it's that constant conversation that we have with kids about, this is how you're feeling, I'm so glad you can identify how you're feeling, this, how do you want to feel, and how do we get there? And so, using that Mind Up Curriculum is super helpful, identifying supports within the school, outside the school, what are things that make them feel okay? You know, I play a lot of Mancala. Kids love that, and it has the jewels that are tactile, that feel smooth and kind of calming. There's counting, and if anyone knows, if you count, it kind of calms you down. So, we do a lot of different ways to help kids get to their brain, but our goal is to help kids get to the green. Their circle breathing is also super helpful, because you can trace with your fingers. So, you again, you have that tactile, as well as the breathing that happens. So, I love our therapy dog program, it's really amazing. Last year, I got to become, I got to be an animal assisted therapy person. I took a course through UNH, and what I learned was the impact of unconditional love that these therapy dogs have with these kids. And over the past year and a half, I've been able to see what it does, and it is truly phenomenal. It is better than I ever thought it would be. We have Megan Ann, who come in on Thursdays, and Maggie is a huge, great peer. And she is, she just lies on the floor, and the kids lie on her. And you think, what, really? How's that going to help kids? Well, what it does is it calms their bodies, and it calms their minds. And when the kids are petting Maggie, and when they're sitting with me in small groups of three, they're able to talk about what's on their, what's in their head, or what's going on at home, and it's a really safe way for them to do that. An added benefit that happens through the therapy dogs are these wonderful, loving people that come with their dog, and they are role models, they're mentors, they're grandparents to some of our kids, and they'll come in and then, you know, they'll talk to the kids, so what's going on in your life? And I'm there, and Maggie's there, and they're just, you know, they're just petting it, and they're feeling calm, they're feeling good about themselves. Feedback I've gotten from teachers is that a lot of times, kids after a therapy dog visit, they come back to the classroom and they're super productive, because their brains are in the green zone, they're ready to learn, and they're feeling calm, and they're feeling safe. Rue and Vicky are a unique combination. Rue is a little papillon dog, I don't know if you're dog people, I'm one, but I've become one. And she's got these ears like this, and she's like, honestly, like, this big, you'll see a picture of her. And she, she does tricks. And so, what the kids learn by working with Rue is they learn how to communicate effectively, they learn that certain words make the dog do certain things, just like with people, please stop, please don't touch me, certain words hopefully will make people do certain things. So, it's an assertiveness training that I have a lot of the fifth and sixth graders doing. It's also very clear that if your communication is clear, Rue will do what you want her to do. If your communication isn't clear, Rue's not doing anything you want her to do. So, it's an opportunity for them to really work on their communication skills, which I think in the fifth and sixth grade is really helpful for the kids. We just had Devin Seamus visit this past Monday, and this past Monday, we had a tragedy in our school, and I was kind of unsure about how I was going to manage it all. And so, what happened, though, is this big, huge muffin line comes in, and these kids just come, and they lie on this muffin line, and they're calm. And because the tragedy impacted our whole Green Street family, teachers came, and they saw Seamus, and they petted him, and they felt better. And it's just, it's this unconditional love, this non-verbal, I think a lot of times, people who are verbal, like myself, feel like, oh, we'll just talk about it. But sometimes kids don't have the words, and sometimes it's not safe to talk about it. And so, the therapy dogs do an amazing job of listening to kids without judgment. We have some kids read to the dogs, but really, they just like talking to the dogs, and so, that's really helpful. The dogs come in for about an hour, and we do fifteen-minute segments with kids, and we do three to a fifteen-minute group, and it seems to be pretty effective as far as supporting kids and getting to their optimum green learning. The last thing that we do is, we started this year doing trauma-informed work. We've been working with Joelle Ben Lent. Mark was amazing in getting this going. And some of the priorities that we've taken as a result of our training with trauma-sensitive practices and ACEs, which is ACEs Needs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, is really focusing on attunement. And how do we attune to our students? How do we attune to our parents? How do we attune to the staff that I get to work with every day? And how do we make sure that we're making them feel accepted, cared for, safe? One of the little anachronyms that we use is called PACE, and every time I'm working with a child, it's, I think about PACE. And PACE stands for playful, accepting, curious, and empathetic. And those are the four, those are the four things every kid or every family member that walks into my office, I really try to promote, that I really want them to know that I'm trying to attune to what their needs are at that current time. Co-regulation and self-regulation, those are concepts. Kids come in when they've had trauma, or they've had an adverse childhood experience. They can come in dysregulated, and that's pretty normal. I know this will be a repeat for some of the administrators, because I got to talk to them about ACEs. But when kids have had an adverse childhood experience, what happens is their ways of dealing with difficult situations are typically in an escalated, hyper vigilant manner, because that's what's worked for them at home. So, we bring them to school, and we expect kids to be calm, and to sit at a desk, and to follow direction. But when you have no experience in doing that, because that's not what your experience is in your home or in your environment, then it's really tricky to do that. And so, our job is to teach those kids. And so our job is to teach those kids, how do I co-regulate? How do I sit with my teacher and let that person know that I'm unable to access my learning brain? Because I'm feeling really, really dysregulated. How do I self-regulate? Well, we do a lot of zones of regulation. We do some mindfulness. But it's really about teaching kids, how do I get to my green? How do I get to my optimal learning brain? Empathy, obviously. Being empathetic to what families, what students are experiencing on a daily basis is critical for being a trauma-sensitive school. And staff and student support. As we move, as we, you know, start to overcome some of these traumatic experiences, supporting staff. How do I deal with this kid in my classroom? I'm feeling so drained. How do I promote self-care? Self-care is critical when we're working with multiple needs and highly needy populations. And so really encouraging staff to engage in some self-care. Leadership. So yes, I get to do leadership too. And I'll say it's really exciting. I call it restorative justice because we have a student senate. And so restorative justice program is just another opportunity at Green Street School so kids can be a leader. We've been really working on conflict resolution skills and teaching in grades two through four, teaching kids how to communicate. I feel blank when you do this. Can you please stop? So really helping kids with language again, really trying to very directly teach the skills kids need in order to be pro-social. And these, you know, this is stuff we want to be said during class time, things that we want being said during recess time. This is just the way we're going to talk to each other in a kind and respectful manner. We have buddies. A lot of our sixth graders like to be buddies with the younger kids, particularly the kindergartners because they're so cute. And so the RJ kids like to do that during their lunchtime. They sacrifice their lunch in recess. We have reading with kids. Some of the kids wanted to teach the kids how to read. So kids who may be struggling, teachers have opened up their classroom to have some of our older kids come in and read with the kids. And lastly, we started this this year and it's kind of cool. I saw this TED Talks. I love those things. And this woman talked about developing kindness agents in her school. And so each of our RJ kids got like a secret agent name and they made posters and they're hanging up in the building. And it's, and we're talking about goals that we have. So what's one thing we can do every day for a week that will make Green Street School a little bit more kind? And so one of the things the kids came up with was, I'm just going to smile at everyone I see. It's not hard. Well, that might be hard for some kids. But it, you know, it's not really complicated stuff. It's just stuff that could have an impact if we continue to do it and if we really support the kids in their work. We're trying to do some panels. That's a, you know, like a restorative panel where kids help other kids work out their conflicts. So we're just starting that. So I don't really feel like I can write that on the PowerPoint, but it is working. We also do, I do a lot of small group individual work. So when we're teaching social skills in a large classroom, we do the curriculum. That's like our universal level, our tier one. But a lot of times, some kids who may not have the skills or they may have to learn some new adaptive behavior, they'll come out in small groups. And we'll really pair them up with maybe someone who could be a role model. And then we'll do some small group work and really help kids learn some social skills in a very, in a small way so they can reinforce the skills and they don't feel like they're not getting what they need in the classroom. Kindness groups, we have, that happens primarily right now in the fifth grade. We're having a lot of drama, they say. The kids call it drama. I'll call it conflict in recess. And so I have a group of students coming in every Monday during lunch. And we sit down and we talk about like, what's our one goal we want to do this week to help recess be a little bit better? And this week's goal is having a good tone. You know, instead of having maybe that, you know, if you have teenagers, you might hear that snarky tone. We're really working on having a good tone. So that's what we're working with the kindness group. And we're going to do that for the rest of the school year. These are my kids who will probably be in RJ next year. So it's great because I can really start having them cultivate relationships with each other and figuring how they're going to work together as a team. And we'll meet on Mondays and we'll figure out our goal. And we may have to do good tone for two weeks or we may have to do good tone for three weeks. But it's an opportunity for them to self-reflect on what they can do to make Green Street a little bit kinder and a little bit better. We do individual support. I meet with students individually. Sometimes I do some cognitive behavioral therapy, teaching kids how to think a little bit differently. And so that happens on an individual level. And I do a lot of lunch groups and a lot of snack groups where I have a couple of groups come together and they come and we have lunch together and we talk, we play crazy face, which is an alteration of hangman. But it's an opportunity for every kid in the building to feel special and to feel loved and to feel wanted. And, and that's my goal. And so we do that every single lunch. Right, Kelsey?
Yeah.
Yeah. So community outreach is, so this has been really great. So last year, I know I talked to you guys about this, for those of you who were here, was my partnership with Amy Goldberg, who's a reach-up worker at Economic Services. And what we did is we did some RAP services around four families. We got consent that we would communicate with one another around the needs of the family. And I would follow these families intensely and she would follow the families intensely and we would communicate with one another. So if there was a need that I couldn't meet, but I knew the economic service, you know, that Amy could meet, I'd call her up. And likewise, if she was worried about something educationally, she would give me a call. So this was an opportunity for us to really support these families. And, and we're doing it again this year because it was that effective. So it's just because sometimes when families are dealing with a lot, not one agency or not the school alone can really support them. They really need the support of the entire community helping them. And so as a result of that, Amy and I went to the Building Flourishing Communities workshop. It's put on by Laura Porter, who is promoting the NEAR curriculum, which is the neuroscience, epigenetics, adverse childhood experiences, and resiliency curriculum. And it's, and it's actually countrywide. And Amy and I got to be trained in this this past summer. And we have been, actually, some of you have experienced our Dog and Pony Show, which is actually really exciting. It's really cool. We get to talk about the research that these two doctors did for the Centers for Disease Control and talking about the impact of adverse childhood experiences and what we can do to offset that impact. And so it's exciting. It's hope. It's when I listen to what you said, it's hard out there, but I think there is opportunity for us to build hope. And one of the ways that we do that is by building resiliency. And so when we talk about resiliency, we're talking about self-efficacy. How do we help kids? How do we help parents? How do we help grandparents advocate for themselves? Care and competent adults in, as mentors. And what, how do we build that? We build that through teachers. We build that through big brothers, big sisters. We build that through the therapy dogs and the grandmothers coming in with their dogs to be with the kids. Care and competent adults can be so critical for kids. The Bigs in Blue program, knowing that they're special to a police officer, that someone is volunteering to spend time with you. That's how important you are. Those are the differences that we can make. And then finally, how do we build community? And really, a community that's strong, that helps people. And that's what this Building Flourishing Communities is about, is how do we brainstorm? How do we work collaboratively? How, we don't say, I'm a school person, I'm an HCRS person, I'm an economic services person. How do we really work collaboratively? Because typically, all families are accessing those services. And so we really need to learn how to best support these families. I just wanted to show you our therapy dogs. The top one is some sixth grade girls with Rue. She's our papillon. And then there's big Maggie. She's so beautiful with all the kids just lying on her. She sheds a lot. And so the kids go back to their classroom with dog hair all over them. And they're like, oh, I've got Maggie love. And they hold on to it for the rest of the day. So it's really special. And Seamus started. And I don't have a picture of Seamus yet because I just met him, but stay tuned. So lastly, I know there were some questions about why we might need a social worker at Green Street School. And I just wanted to address those questions. So when we were initially talking about this, Mark and I sat down, we had to present to the legislature back in the fall, about what are the needs of the kids at Green Street School? And just by looking through class lists and just from my knowledge of families and knowledge of kids, I was able to come up with the number that an average of five kids per classroom have exposure to trauma. And trauma, I don't mean they had a bad experience. I mean, brain-changing trauma. And so what trauma does is it impacts how kids learn. It impacts language acquisition. It learn, it impacts the acquisition of executive function skills. It also impacts behavior. We have to teach behavior to kids who've experienced brain-changing trauma.
Can you define trauma?
It can be one single really severe incident or it can be ongoing incidents that happen. The way ACES have measured trauma, so the things that ACES, the adverse childhood experiences, what they measure is they look at three domains. They look at household dysfunction, which would include kiddos who've experienced a parent incarcerated, divorce separation, substance abuse, mental health issues. That would fall under household dysfunction. They also have neglect. And what falls under is physical neglect and emotional neglect. And then abuse, physical, sexual, and emotional abuse. So those are the, those are the wings that ACES look at, the adverse childhood experiences. There's a survey that people do. And if you check off that you've had one, two, or three, you know, that, that's how we know how many ACES.
So the kids are actually asked these questions?
No. They volunteer this information typically when they're talking to me. Or parents may volunteer it when they call and they're concerned that, you know, Joey or Suzie's having a hard time and, and this is why.
It's not a formal process to get that percentage? It's more of like through experience and knowing our families and kids?
So it's a good, a well-based estimate then?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a well-based estimate, but it's certainly not something that is, has paper that backs it up. So when we look at ACES, I just described what ACES are. Forty-three percent of Vermonters have zero ACES. They, they can't identify any of those, you know, domains with the household dysfunction, the emotional neglect and the emotional abuse, and the, I'm sorry, the neglect and the abuse. And so that means 57 Vermonters, that means over half of us have at least one ACE. And a lot of times when you have one ACE, you have a couple of ACES. So this is not something that's a them, these families. It's an us. It impacts over 50% of us. And it's something that we need to work collaboratively to support. We can prevent ACES and that's the nice thing. It's not, it's not like a sentence. Kids who have ACES are going to be very smart. They're going to get college degrees. They're going to do amazing, amazing things. And how do we prevent ACES from having an enormous impact is we build resiliency. We create those opportunities for self-efficacy for that care and competent adult. And we create communities that care and support families. A social worker would, our hope would be, would do intense work with families, including home visits, collaboration with community agencies, and meeting basic needs. So, you know, as, as my colleagues have presented, we have people who are homeless and they don't have any dishes and they don't have any beds. You know, those are some basic needs that people have. We have, you know, working with community agencies. How do we do this outreach? Like I can do some outreach and I definitely try my hardest. But I can't make sure that people are attending their meetings. I can't make sure that people are accessing service. If, if a family's super anxious and making that phone call is super tough, having a social worker to sit with that family to make that phone call, to do that follow-up would be critical. Having home visits, being, you know, school can be a scary place. Not all of us had great experiences at school. So doing home visits where parents feel safe. I've had a couple of parents say, can't you just come to my house and meet with me? And I would love to if I didn't have 220 something kids, but I do. And so having someone who goes to the home, work with the parents around their issues. We saw the Resiliency movie as a staff meeting. Mark brought that to us. And it was really great. They talked about this social worker in the movie who goes to homes and works with families and creates safety. And really helps them overcome some of the barriers for them getting healthy and for them overcoming some of the challenges that they have. And that would be our hope, that a social worker would be able to do the work that we saw being done in the Resilience movie. Our personal goal would be to decrease the impact of trauma by sixth grade. I mean, these kids, we have them from K to six. We get them for seven whole years. This is great. We have great relationships with them. We watch them grow. It's beautiful. And so if we are able to really put things in place that help kids decrease the impact, we can't get rid of the trauma, but we can certainly mitigate the impact for them. And that would be our goal with the work of the social worker, being able to talk about what happens if they want to. If they don't, that's okay too. How do we work on transitions? If I've been through trauma, how do I transition from one thing to the other? You know, just some simple skills that will really help these kids be successful in the future. For the past five years since I've worked at Green Street School, the HCRS clinician, we've had Tamara Edinson and Erica Salami, they've been at capacity. I can no longer refer kids to our HCRS clinician. It is March. Okay, so we, we need more mental health support for our families. You know, I have a waiting list already for next year. I'm just waiting for kids to move on to VAMS. So that doesn't feel good. According to NFI and Joelle Van Lent, and I'm also taking the Trauma Informed Practice Academy up at UPM. It's an, it's a hybrid course. It's online and it's face-to-face once, once a Friday, once a month. And the recommendation I am getting from all the people that I'm listening and learning from is that doing family systems work has the biggest impact for children. That's how we change communication patterns at home. That's how we build positive environments for kids to feel safe and to learn. That's how we break down barriers for support. And so I think using a social worker to help do that really great intense family work would have such a great impact for the kids who've experienced trauma at Green Street School. And that's, unless you have any questions.
I have a couple of general questions for all of you. You've all indicated that there's a higher percentage, but do you have a number in your head? Catherine, I think you can close us to that. You were saying the growth over the last seven years. I'm not sure if you gave a number.
I actually didn't. I could probably do that just by our EST and 504 records. I can give you that kind of, but I don't have it off the top of my head right now.
The growth and need that you're seeing is if there's a, I'm looking for, and I'll mention this again to the board, I mean, we, it's on our agenda here eventually when we get to our agenda. But that we talked about pulling things out and having that for a video. So I've been making notes on this sort of thing, but trying to explain to the town reps and give them an exact number or a rough number. That this is where our need was five years ago or 10 years ago. This is where we're at now. And this is what's really going on in our community, what we're seeing with our kids. So if perhaps that number can be shot over to us in a couple of days? I don't know. If it's, I don't know how hard it is to find that. And it could be, and it could be a simple thing is, this is how many, you know, like what you're talking about with Oak Grove School, these, this many kids.
This is how our EST.
Has expanded.
Has expanded. This is the 504 kids who are.
So it's this many kids in a classroom, you know, this percentage. And people, so whatever feels like the right way to show the realities of what you're dealing with, I'd love to have those numbers to be able to pass on to the town rep. Any other questions from the board?
And just to clarify about that statistical question, is that by definition, that what you said about the Oak Grove kids, that it's exclusive categories, IEP, 504, and EST? So step is the only one that overlaps any of those?
Right, yeah. We didn't need to be kind of clear because we were confused on that before. But just to be able to pass that along.
Step supports could be part of the EST or a 504 plan, for example.
Okay. But for the other three categories, if like you did, we add all those together, you get the percentage of kids in the school who need some kind of support beyond the regular tier one instructional behavioral thing.
Another number that Andy gave us back maybe in December or November was transancy, is that the word? And I don't know if we could all come up with that sort of number that he looked at, and it was about a third of the school was in and out. So if, any of those sorts of numbers would be helpful, I think, for town reps to hear.
I think one thing that, to add to the social worker piece and the schools that I glean from Jody's work is that she's available to also work and provide support to students who are chronically truant or chronically tardy. And one of the things that I learned in looking at that was that it's really on the schools to do that, that we have a local, youth services has a local, has a person, the Barge program, to provide support for kids who are chronically truant and/or tardy, which, you know, research lets us know that that makes a huge difference on the potential success of a student graduating and their attitudes towards school. Unfortunately, Barge only provides support for students that are pre-teen and teen. So all the kids that pretty much we're dealing with from K through six, there's no other outside agency that can augment, provide augmented services for that or support. So it really probably falls a lot on you or us. I mean, sometimes I've gone to houses to pick up kids and, but that's another element of need.
Yeah, well, intensive family-based services will work with kiddos who have chronic truancy. But in order to get access to intensive family-based services, you need to be involved with DCF. And most families have not volunteered to be involved with these.
Any other questions from the board? So then I think we all want to thank you a lot for your. Feel free to tell us when you want to come back. Maybe you'll, maybe you'll have really great things to tell us as well.
We're coming back for, it's still leadership. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's other good things.
I think what the presentation shows is there's a time where good things happen.
There's a time where really good things happen. I mean.
She might be happening to the children outside of school.
Exactly. Not all that we're doing. Thank you, Rob. Okay, so going back to our agenda, because we're now twenty minutes left of our meeting theoretically. I'm going to run down this agenda and see where you all want to go.
Well, before you do that.
Yep.
Given that we really only have five minutes if you want to give an executive session, there's one thing on there that requires action, I think. There may be more. And I'm thinking that we should basically table the rest of it and come in early on the 21st, which we'll do anyway before we present to the town reps and do the rest of it.
What's the one you have identified that needs to happen?
I think there's one thing that says action needed somewhere.
The BCTV proposal. So let's go to that one.
So we got to figure out what we're going to ask them for.
So we asked for a proposal to put together ten, five, ten, fifteen-minute clips. I don't remember exactly the number here right now. And they came back and said, yes, we couldn't meet last week. So they're not sure they can do it anymore, but they will still try for us. The quote that they gave, you know, I couldn't, I felt like we could all say yes to, the hundred and fifty dollars. But I couldn't give that approval. It's just one person without a meeting.
Who's going to choose it?
That, for that proposal of a hundred and fifty dollars, we need to give her or them the numbers, basically where we're at all the time in the videos.
Which gave from this minute to that minute, and we tell them all the little clips, and they just edit it.
Yes, so like I've done tonight, I put down some notes. I don't have times, obviously, but I put down persons and some ideas.
We have to go and get the video and then.
Exactly.
Have to do it tonight, really.
Well, you need to do it the next day. Basically.
We won't have it.
Well, we're asking for it to be done by Wednesday. Now, let me just.
You can ask for all the other ones and then have this one from this meeting on once that's up.
Right, but we're still, next week is our town meeting representative meeting. So it's a week out. Let me also just note that the latest weather forecast shows that the nor'easter number four should be hitting us on Wednesday night next week.
Great.
So at some level, I, I mean, it's still a ways out, but they've been eerily accurate. And it's, I'm almost wondering how much effort should put into it. But sorry, I'm, it's March, and I'm a little pessimistic on the weather, so.
So are you suggesting that we should not do a video based on how little time there is left and that the video might get moved?
Here's an idea. What if we do just from tonight? And we only try to, I think our original vision was a little wider of all the things that had come to us. But I think just this one for five or ten minutes.
I think this hits a lot of the topics we would have done. And I think it's something worth, even if we are not having a lot of people here, we have everybody's email. We can send the video off to all of the town rep's emails.
So it's.
I think it could be used, definitely.
And did you, are you getting good audio? I was a little worried about the presentations. Did you get good audio on all of this?
We can boost it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion of what I was mumbling. I don't know my main motion. It would be to spend the hundred and fifty dollars, pull scenes from tonight. You guys are going to send me anything that specifically you wanted in there. Otherwise, you're kind of leaving it to me to communicate with BCTV.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Seconded.
How was that, Kelsey, for a complicated? Okay, so beyond that.
We need to, we need to vote.
We should vote on that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, anybody? So beyond that, the next meeting for our presentation, there is something started that the administrators have started to work on. Typically, I spend a lot of time looking at that as well. So is that something that I guess you're going to just all leave with me because we have no time to look at it?
No.
What are you talking about?
The actual presentation that is given next week.
Is it like a PowerPoint? Yes, something.
Yes, yeah. And what we talked about as administrators, you'd given us a list of things that we wanted to talk about. So we put together individual slides. Instead of each principal talking about each thing, one principal is going to talk about student need. I'm actually going to do Deb's Head Start stuff because she can't be here. Jerry's going to be talking about some of the extras that we have provided for kids. Andy's going to be talking about some of the food stuff that we do. Mark is going to be talking about MTSS. So they'll talk about it for all the schools, not each principal talking about each thing. Because some of the feedback that I think we've gotten over the years is that that presentation goes so long that they, the people don't have time for talking about the budget. So we're trying to.
So how long, how long do you all think that this whole presentation should be?
Three minutes.
So it's aimed for thirty.
I just totally made that up.
Well, that's kind of where I was, too. If we do like thirty minutes and another ten, fifteen for questions, and then that leaves another.
An hour or whatever you want.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then you're leaving that with Lyle and I to do a lot of that? One of the other things that needs to absolutely happen would be the Academy Principal Search update because things are happening on Monday.
Yes, they are.
I have hired.
Okay, do you want to do that first?
Yeah.
Love to.
Okay, let's do that.
Before I can hire, I want to give you a resignation. And that resignation is from Kelly Diaz of her third-grade position. Maybe called the last meeting, you accepted Mary Ross's resignation from the assistant principal here because she was on a one-year leave of absence from here to be a burden. She's since gotten off her position of burden. Now Kelly has resigned her third-grade position that she was in while she did the interim premier. It's confusing, but it all works out. So, so who's to hire? Except her resignation over hiring Laura Casey.
I think we accept the resignation with regrets.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we can hear the next.
Yes. Now we're hiring Laura Casey to fill the third-grade slot vacated by Kelly. I can patch her on copies of her resume. Laura Casey, I don't have enough, but you can take a peek at that and pass it on. She's been in the school for quite a few years. Several years ago, she resigned to have children. Had children, she's been doing a job share in kindergarten for the last three years. And she's now ready to come back for the last four years. She's now ready to come back full-time. She's a phenomenal teacher.
She was coordinating the after-school thing for her.
She coordinated the after-school program. So she's, we've had our hopes into her even when she wasn't working here, so to speak. For quite a few years, she's.
She's ready to full-time again?
She is, yeah.
Those kids are getting big.
Kids are getting big. And her youngest will start kindergarten next year, so.
So any motion for that, please?
Aye. Move that we accept the hiring of Laura Casey for third grade?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And you don't need to hire for kindergarten, is that right?
Right, because that position belonged to Emily Marker, who is now next year coming back full-time. So she'll revert back to full-time. It was a job share, but it was Emily's position. And with that said, now that Kelly's no longer employed with that resignation, we are offering for the, I want to hire her as the assistant principal at a county school.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's a lot of hiring.
Is there anything else? Are there any other hirings over here, Jerry? Deb, you don't have anything for a hiring?
No.
All right. On to Monday.
Monday, so there will be no storm. Monday will be the focus group round of the Academy Principal Position. I've been able to work with a really wonderful interview committee during the first couple of rounds. And we've narrowed it down to our finalists. And so Monday in the church over here, we will be meeting. I will send you all the schedule with when, what time, how the candidates are going to move through the groups. So that will be Monday, the nineteenth.
And that's what was initially planned?
Yes.
On the agenda, there were reports from standing committees, administrative reports. Anybody feel that anything you had was really urgent that needed to be?
So I spoke with the planning person for our federal review the first week in April this morning. And we're going to have a follow-up call next week. April second through the fifth, the reviewers will be here, and they will want to speak with some of the board members.
What day is this one?
It's a Monday, April second through April fifth. There will be an introductory meeting that you're invited to where we just kind of talk about EES. And it's an hour meeting at nine AM at EES to give an overview of the agency. And then there will be interviews conducted throughout those three days with policy council members, with board members. And they're really looking for your availability to kind of survive the schedule. So I can put something out in the meeting to help you, and then you can let me know if you're interested and whether you'd like to be a part of that.
All right, so it'll be sometime that week?
Yes, preferably Monday through Wednesday. And if anyone can be there for the introductory meeting, that would be one if it was not required.
But you wouldn't need us all for all that time? Just a couple hours here and there? Okay, so if you give us specifics, we can all say when we can come?
Okay, I will do that. I'll bring you a note.
Okay. Could be in a meeting and all go together?
So the one thing I have is that I've been working with Robin, Jill, a little bit to make sure that we have childcare for the March twenty-four town meeting. And I know that we have some high school kids that are willing to do some community service. We've put it out to all the substitutes, the paraeducators, teachers, everywhere in WSCSU. Some of the reps are doing some fundraising to be able to pay people. But we want people to know that there will be childcare available for children four through thirteen, twelve?
I think that was the last thing I saw, was thirteen.
Yeah. So it'll be starting when the meeting starts in the morning. There will not be childcare available during lunch. So during lunch, reps will have to pick up their children.
Feed them?
Feed them.
As they went.
And then leave them off again. So you can look for that information in town?
Hillary sent the email.
Okay.
It was sent out today.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything under administrative reports that you want us to know or act on?
Nothing, I can't wait.
And when we say wait, just so you're aware, that probably means wait till April because the next meeting, we basically are with the town meeting reps, so there's not much of a meeting. All right, so then just coming down here, diversity training discussion, we can table, or is there anything?
I just have a brief update. I told Dottie that we were interested in a more condensed training on a single day. And she suggested four hours on the date we had chosen, June twentieth. So we'll just have to figure out what time, if that amount of time works for everybody.
Four hours?
That's what she said the minimum was going to be.
So I think we say like one to five or something?
Yep, we may, we'll probably still be in school. So that.
Right.
June twentieth, I'm not even going to be.
So we may need to find a space, but you and I can work on that.
Okay.
I will be able to.
Sorry.
Well, we don't have to. I mean, four out of five. Is everyone else still here?
I'll have to see. It's one to five. It's quilter.
No, we all have to.
What if we could change it to a Saturday or something like that for that one? So that people didn't have to worry about their workday? Or we could do it five to nine, I guess, if that works.
Five to nine would be possible, too, yeah. I just know that I'm going to take my kids out to Illinois in June right after school, before school might end. Because I got to be back with the extension, so.
Well, that was just the date we had set along at our last meeting. And I told her, and she said, that's fine. But it doesn't have to be on June twentieth that we want to switch the date as.
Can you maybe ask her what other dates she has? The end of June or early July? We wanted administrators to be there, too, right? Administrators, you're all gone in July, as normal?
If any luck.
So maybe it has to be a little bit earlier in June.
Yeah, maybe earlier in June before the school year ends, so there.
And maybe try for five to nine at night type thing.
Okay.
Okay. Town meeting preparation, BCTV. Confirmation of next meeting because I've confused some people, but I hope I have it all straight with everyone now. We want it to be at a different school, so our town meeting preparation will not be here. It's over with Jerry at Oak Grove. Which hopefully the town meeting reps will all read and see because they're here tonight. And then I think we switch.
We can make an announcement, too.
That'll be good.
And we're meeting at the normal time.
So what do we want to meet?
I thought I saw where it was at seven o'clock.
I mean, the town meeting is at seven. We're still having our own meeting before that, are we?
That's my question. Do we want a two-hour meeting of our own? A lot of times we've done six to seven, or six-thirty to seven, and just check in.
I think to be humane, six to seven.
So let's say we're starting at six, and seven o'clock is the presentation. And we're looking. And we're looking-
With our leftover agenda.
And we're looking at 7:30 to be done with the main focus and open it up to questions and hopefully be out of here by 8:30.
Are you laughing at our hopefulness?
I don't know if an hour is enough for what was left on the agenda.
It's a good goal.
It won't be.
If things are working out because it's in the gym.
Okay, shall we do our executive session?
No, I just am checking and making sure. We've done the social preview, the integrated field, we can table until next week, the next time. Gun violence prevention resolution, I know that's been circulated. Do we want to touch on that or do we need to have a lot of discussion?
We do that, which is-
I guess that's, I don't know what the legislative schedule is. I think it would be good to send it as soon as possible unless people feel like they'd like to have a longer discussion about it. If everyone's just going to be like, yes, good, then we could do that now.
I'm perfectly happy to move quickly on this.
I'm happy to move quickly.
The gun stuff.
Okay, so I think you should read it all.
Okay, read the whole letter? All right. I move that we pass the following resolution as a school board. To Governor Phil Scott, Speaker Mitzi Johnson, pro tempore Tim Ash from Brattleboro Town Schools Board, as you are undoubtedly aware, schools have become a target of mass shootings. Vermont is not immune to this as evidenced by the recent threats in Fairhaven as well as several others around the state. We take our responsibility as elected officials to ensure the safety of our schoolchildren and employees very seriously. Students have the right to attend school and feel safe from the threat of gun violence. Parents have the right to send their children to school and know they will come safely home at the end of the day. Teachers have the right to come to work concerned with educating students, not worrying about protecting them from gunfire. We have made all reasonable updates to our buildings, equipment, and protocols to make our schools secure. In addition to security measures, students and teachers spend more time participating in lockdown drills than they could otherwise spend learning, and it is provoking anxiety and fear in children, staff, and parents. And yet, as the recent tragedy in Parkland, Florida showed us, even these measures are not enough to prevent someone with an AR-15 from coming in and killing students and teachers. The only way we can do that is with the help of our government to stop gun violence. Therefore, we, the Brattleboro Town Schools Board, resolve that our elected officials in the Vermont House and Senate must pass common sense gun violence prevention legislation during the 2018 legislative session, and that Governor Scott must sign such legislation into law to take effect immediately. We urge the consideration and passage of the strongest possible legislation currently before the Vermont House or Vermont Senate focused on raising the legal age to purchase firearms through 21, universal background checks, removing guns from the scene of a domestic violence crime, enabling law enforcement officers to get in order to remove guns when a person shows signs of threat and danger, and prohibiting bump fire stocks for firearms. Passing these bills into law is a first step towards effective gun violence prevention legislation that protects our students. In addition, we urge the drafting and passage of legislation that has been proposed in previous legislative sessions, which would prevent possession, sale, or manufacture of military-style semi-automatic rifles. Finally, we urge Governor Scott to allow Vermont to join the coalition States for Gun Safety formed by our neighbors in New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and New Jersey to trace and intercept illegal guns and enhance information gathering. These actions are long overdue. We need your help to keep our students and staff safe. This is our moral responsibility as elected officials. Let's work together to create a peaceful and safe environment for the schoolchildren of Vermont.
Second to that, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think the only thing was just a technical thing, it's Brattleboro Town School Board and the Schools Board.
Okay, sorry.
I think that's the only-
And I'll make that change and also I'll update the date to today. Send us.
All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Boon? Was there still more discussion? Sorry?
Yeah, one point, it's not, it's not very important, so I'm going to skip it. Okay.
Voting aye. Okay, unanimous. And then Robin, will you make sure that's sent over to the reformer?
Yes, to the reformer.
Reformer Commons, KVT?
Yes.
And Barb.
And who?
I did send her a copy of this earlier today.
But probably would have sent her the revised one with the-
Okay.
One that's been, so she knows it's been.
What was the other thing you said? Reformer Commons and what?
W KVT, I think. Lastly, Barb wants to know who's going to do what motion for the town meeting. She needed to have that decided. We normally make those decisions, and you got them right there?
Yes.
Read it out.
Probably, 26 is to see what salaries the town school district will pay the school board members. I'll do that one if you want.
Kim wants to do that?
27 to see if the town school district will authorize the school directors to borrow money in anticipation of taxes.
Who wants to do that one?
I'll do that.
So 26 is Kim.
Yeah.
27 is David.
28 to see if the town school district will authorize the district to accept and expend categorical grants and aid received from the state of Vermont and the US government.
Spoon, you want to do that one?
Okay, what am I doing?
Categoryical grants. 29?
29 is, 29 is the, is the budget. That's you.
Well, Robin has done it.
There's always, there's only, there's only ever four.
Robin can do that one, I'm going to talk and give the floor and everything.
Okay.
All right, there we are. That's done. Okay, I didn't, don't think I had anything else on here. Next agenda items, I'll move forward, what we didn't get to?
I should, there would, should be a hiring for Academy as well.
And we would do that on Wednesday now on Monday?
I think we would decide, I'd do some follow-up on reference checks, and I'll do some before Monday, but continue that and then come back to you with a formal proposal.
Okay, so then at this point, I believe we need a motion to go into executive session, which I guess I'll make, and we need to cite exactly why, which is written down here, "After making a specific finding, premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at substantial disadvantage confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body."
Second.
All right, so we are now entering in-
We have to vote.
Oh, voting. Yes, everyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we've entered in.